Call this public meeting order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. McCandry.
President.
Dr. Rothschild.
President.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Gahan.
Here. Mrs. Reed, please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A minutes of the Shade Tree Commission Quarterly Meeting held October 31, 2019. 3B Fuel Card Analysis Received from Office of the City Controller dated March 2, 2020. 3C Correspondence Sent to Mayor Page G. Cognetti dated March 3, 2020, Regarding Attachment E Disclosures by Current Contractors. 3D Correspondence Received from Terrence J. McDonald Esquire dated February 26, 2020, Regarding Electric City Parking Garage. 3E Correspondence Sent to Brian Fallon, Director Department of Parks and Recreation, Dated March 3, 2020, Regarding Novembreno Splash Park Project Update. 3F Correspondence Received from Parks and Recreation Director, Regarding Novembreno Splash Park and Recreation Complex Progress Update Report, February 25, 2020. 3G Anticipated Budget for City of Scranton Appeal Prepared by Stevenson &amp; Lee Received March 3, 2020. 3H Agenda for the Zoning Hearing Board Meeting to be Held March 11, 2020. 3I Correspondence Received from City Council Solicitor Kevin Hayes Esquire, Dated March 3, 2020, Regarding Prohibition of Certain Dog Breeds. 3J Correspondence Sent to Mayor Page G. Cognetti, Dated March 4, 2020, Regarding Motion Made by Scranton City Council. 3K Minutes of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority Meeting Held February 5, 2020. 3L Correspondence Received from Councilman Pat Rogan, Dated March 6, 2020, Regarding Resignation from Scranton City Council. 3M Correspondence Received from the Office of the Mayor Dated March 6, 2020, Regarding COVID-19 Update.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, receive them filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. I received this email yesterday, I'm sure all of you did, That the Bethel AME Church on Saturday, April 4th, From 12 to 4, will be having a chicken wing dinner, you know, as a fundraiser. It's $10. It's four whole wings, french fries, green beans, and a dinner roll. So please try to get out and support this. Thank you. It's all I have.
And I just have a quick reminder that residents should start receiving census, Their census materials in the next month, so make sure you fill out your census forms and send them back in. For each person that's not counted, that equals about $2,000 per person, Which could add up pretty well over the next 10 years. So when you get your census forms, please fill them out and send them back in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have quite a few, actually. So last week, council received notice That former councilman Pat Rogan had resigned his position. First, I would just like to say that I would like to thank Pat Rogan For his commitment to public service over the last 10 years. He was a councilman for a little over a decade, which is a big sacrifice to make for anyone. I enjoyed working with him, and I wish him and his growing family the best. In terms of his council seat, there has to be an appointment. So council will accept letters of interest and resumes Of those residents interested in seeking an appointment To fill the vacant seat of Pat Rogan, Whose term extends through the first Monday in January 2022. Residents must meet the qualifications of the Home Rule Charter, Which states that a councilperson must be a United States citizen, Shall have been a resident of the city for at least one year prior to appointment, And shall reside in the City of Scranton throughout the term of service. Letters of interest and resumes will be accepted in the office of the city clerk And must be received no later than Thursday, March 19th at 12 noon. Interviews will be conducted in city council chambers at a date and time to be determined. You will be contacted individually, and you must be present for the interview To be considered for the appointment. And council would welcome any and all people to apply for the seat, And we will, we will hope, you know, to get interest in the seat Because it is for two years, and it is extremely important. The second announcement that I have is this Saturday, March 14th, The annual St. Patrick's Parade will be held in our downtown. Parade Day Mass at St. Peter's Cathedral begins at 10:00 a.m. The Brian P. Kelly Memorial Two Mile Foot Race starts at 11:00 a.m. Then the parade steps off at 11:45 a.m. The parade route begins at Mulberry Street and Wyoming Ave, Moving towards Lackawanna Ave, taking a left turn onto Lackawanna Avenue, Which then turns into Jefferson, and then left on to Spruce Street. After a right turn onto North Washington, The parade passes the reviewing booth near the corner of North Washington Avenue and Linden Street. The parade ends at the corner of North Washington Avenue and Vine Street. There will be several street closures. Streets will be closed to traffic from approximately 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. While the parade is still occurring. Please be mindful of participants, paradegoers, and road closures If you need to travel throughout the downtown on Saturday. One important announcement is, in terms of the parade, is Colts buses Once again will provide a free transportation, free transportation on Parade Day, And we would like everyone to join in the festivities and have an enjoyable, safe day. Next announcement is that council's regularly scheduled meeting for next week, March 17th, has been rescheduled due to a lack of a quorum, To Monday, March 16th at 6:30 p.m. We will caucus at 5:45 p.m. prior to the meeting on Monday evening as well. And finally, for all of those who come to our meetings to address council, I would like you to keep the following in mind. First, you should discuss agenda items or business that relates to the city. As president of this council, I will not tolerate any speaker Who attacks councilmembers or anyone else personally. There is no room for that kind of behavior in these chambers. I do believe that we are all striving towards the same goal Of making this city a better place, And it makes absolutely no sense to spend your five minutes attacking someone Because of their gender, their sexual identity, or anything else. As public officials, we are certainly not immune from criticism, nor should we be. But that criticism should be based on our actions as public officials And should not involve any attacks of a personal nature. I have the utmost respect for the important role that the public plays in these council meetings. We honestly could not have a meeting without you, the public, and your input, And I believe that every council member up here values that. I ask that you please be respectful of the rules So that we may engage in meaningful public discourse. And I would like to take a minute to just read from our rules. No person, including members of council, Shall use their time during citizens' participation To personally insult or attack any individual, Name-calling, profanity, racial or ethnic slurs, Discriminatory remarks based on race, color, religion, national origin, ancestry, or place of birth, Sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, Marital status or age, and any other behavior That is inconsistent with the purpose and intent of conducting official business Shall not be permitted. And lastly, if you do plan on speaking tonight, I would ask that you please state your name for the record and our stenographer. Mrs. Reed.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
And the first speaker we have tonight is the Chief Al Lucas, Who is our fire chief and our emergency management coordinator. And the hon-, oh, you're coming together, okay. And the Honorable Mayor Page Cognetti. Thank you.
Good evening, council. First, I'd like to just take a moment to express our hearts and prayers For the people that perished in the tragic fire in Dunmore last night. I was asked to come tonight just to basically address the emergency management, Oh, I'm sorry, Al Lucas, Acting Fire Chief. I was asked to come and speak about the, our plans for Public health response to things such as the coronavirus. We've had a plan in place since somewhere around 2006. So when the mayor appointed me the new emergency management coordinator, I took the plans out and started to update them with things like, You know, name changes, for instance, myself. So we were going through all of those things, and as fate would have it, The coronavirus started getting on the radar. So we went specifically to that annex, and we started digging, drilling down into that one To see, you know, what our plan actually is. So the plan basically is we, we look at the, how we're going to continue operations of our government To make sure that we're going to serve the citizens no matter what, If this thing got worse or if it goes away. Either way, we're hoping for the latter. Every department already had a plan in place, And I asked each department to, again, look at theirs and see if it was any, any changes were needed. Manpower has changed since 2006. Maybe some departments are larger, some are smaller. So some of the 40% outlooks that we look at as an outage of, sick outage from work, Should this virus affect our workforce, we're talking internally in the city. So we all took our plans and we tweaked them, did some Just, just basic continuation of government and stuff. We looked at supply chains, are we still going to get our supplies? Should our supply chains be affected by illnesses in their fields and avenues? So we looked at all of that, and, you know, we're, we're prepared, we're ready to go. We, I don't know, I don't know if there's more you need to know specifically, Mayor, is there?
I think just the one thing I would like to say, first of all, I appreciate you both coming, Because just being out in the community, there are people that are panicked about this whole thing, And I think it's good for people, at least in the city, to know that If, if there is an outbreak or, you know, something does happen to that effect, That we do have things, plans in place, and so I do appreciate you coming and giving us.
And on that, I just, because I lost my place for a second. We did, we did start a task force, the mayor directed me to reach out to the schools, for instance. So I reached out through the local schools, parochial schools, prep, And we had a good meeting, we all got together here in City Hall. We shared and exchanged our networking information, And now we have a network chain where everything that gets pushed out of the CDC or DOH every day, I'm pushing to them, and they're letting me know what their plans are. Should the CDC or DOH at some point recommend a closure of a school, They'll let us know that, and then we'll obviously be able to communicate that to the public of what's going on. So it's kind of a coordination of we need to know what all of our partners are doing, As well as they need to know what we're doing. So I shared our plans, they've shared theirs. I then met with the hospitals, we were on a conference call with Wilkes-Barre and our local hospitals. Where we're just a, a component of their plan, We know what our part will be in that, should that day come. We're prepared for that, and I can assure you that the hospitals are prepared, Because DOH, you know, really drives them and tells them each step of the way What level of their plan they need to be at. And they're ready now, and they'll be ready to move to the next level Should this get closer or expand any, any larger than it is.
And do we know if we have any actual confirmed cases in Lackawanna County?
There are no confirmed cases, there are 12 cases so far confirmed presumptive positive, Which just means they've tested positive locally, but not to the CDC in Atlanta. None of them are here. Philadelphia County was the newest one today. Wayne County and Montgomery County, I think Wayne County, I believe, is the closest to us.
Okay.
And, but there's 12 cases right now in Pennsylvania. None of them are considered community spread, which, just so we understand that. Community spread would mean that we're getting it from each other. All of the people that were presumptive positive tested Traveled somewhere where someone else was infected, and they would have contracted it from them. So it, so far, you know, in our state, it is not spreading through the communities. It is, it was contracted from somewhere else and brought back here. And then they were isolated, and then they do what they call contact tracing, And that, they look at every person that was in contact with those 12 people, And they are now quarantining them and isolating the actual patients. So CDC is on it, and we're prepared should it get any worse.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for Chief Lucas? Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you. So Chief Lucas and I are going to Wilkes-Barre tomorrow For a regional COVID meeting with, with some members of the medical community in the, in the entire region. So that's just another continuation of the, the work that we're doing To stay in touch at all levels, both down to the school level here, And then up, the chief's always in touch with the Department of Health, And like he said, communicating, getting, getting the information from the CDC. We're putting that out on our website, and it's being pushed out on the, both the Chief of Police And the Facebook page for the mayor, so Mayor of Scranton. A piece of it that the Chief talked about is, don't panic. That's part of the, the thing that we want to reiterate here is, I was at Wegmans last night, and all the toilet paper was gone. At this time, there's no need to go out and buy out all the toilet paper. There, there's no need to panic. This is a stay calm situation, stay calm, but stay home if you don't feel well, right? So part of it's listen to your body, use common sense, realize that you don't want to get anybody sick anyway. We should, this is something we should be doing in our lives for flu and other viruses, just in general. So, you know, stay healthy, take precautions, wash your hands thoroughly and often, Keep surfaces that others touch, like door handles, wiped down. If you feel sick, stay home. So looking forward to next Saturday, to this coming Saturday, to the St. Patrick's Day Parade. At this time, there is no need to alter the day's schedule. However, we are asking that residents, especially those who are older Or have chronic health conditions, to consider the risks of attending a large gathering, Considering, you know, everything that is going on. But like the chief said, there are no local cases here in Lackawanna County, And we have no reason to believe at this time that we need to make alterations to the schedule. However, what everyone needs to understand is that Our number one concern and highest priority is the health, safety, and welfare of our residents And others who work in or visit our city, As well as our uniformed officers who are out in force on a day like Parade Day To maintain public order and safety. So we will continue to be closely monitoring the situation. We'll be conferring with, with folks in the medical field and in other cities and seek guidance. In the meantime, like I said, stay calm, stay home if needed, and we'll continue to give updates. So anything else on, any other questions on that piece?
No, thank you.
So I just wanted two things, three things. Gas cards, so we had, I know you guys talked about that a lot. We've been working with Controller Murray, like we talked about last week at caucus, To get this situation, get ourselves into a new system where there are, there's much more accountability, There's much more of a control system. Controller Murray and Pat Sheridan, the interim business administrator, Are working on what that would look like. Like everything, this is not as easy as an overnight solution. It might, it might, maybe, we don't know for sure, it might require an RFP and a contract. We will keep you all informed as this goes on. We're trying to do this absolutely as quickly as possible to, to make that, to make that happen. Like we talked about, the goal is to get it where the card is attached to a vehicle, not a person. So easier said than done, like everything, but we are working on it and we'll keep you posted. We have, last, we had, last night we had a census ambassador training, we have another one tomorrow. So like Councilman Donahue said, the Census Bureau is sending out the information to households, The actual information for the census. I believe it's, it goes out on Thursday. So we are having another training tomorrow night at 5:30 at Northern Light, If you want to become a volunteer. I want to give a shout out to Norma Jeffries in the audience, Who has been making so many phone calls to get volunteers to get out there and get the census count up. So thank you, Ms. Jeffries. And finally, I was not here last week, but I, I heard that it wasn't the most pleasant meeting. And I just want to state for, for councilperson Rothschild, For everyone that is here, everyone that is in our community, that I stand behind her And any initiatives that she proposes to enable us to be a more tolerant And educated community and city. So, thank you. Thank you for taking the lead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you. Have a good night. Next speaker is Les Spindler.
Good evening, Councilor Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner. First off, I'd like to wish Pat Rogan best of luck in his next endeavor, whatever that may be. I've known Pat for a number of years now. For the most part, I support him and all his stay in council. And again, I wish him good luck on whatever he's going to do from now on. I guess rumors are he's moving out of the city, so, so obviously he can't be a councilperson anymore, so. Good luck, Pat. Last week I spoke about, is it NDC that runs the parking council and gone?
Yes.
Okay, about the free spots that they've taken away from businesses in the city, And I think it's hurting businesses. And I said, like, I go to pay my bill at the Times Tribune, They tell me disabled people come. Instead of parking in front of a building, sometimes they have to walk a block or two. I think that's wrong. They're, they're hurting businesses downtown. I think it would be a good idea for council to get NDC in here for caucus, Ask him if there's any way that these businesses can get their free spots back. I think it's, it'd be good for the downtown and good for people. And at least the handicapped spots. That's wrong for making people walk all that distance. You know, we want our city businesses to thrive, not chase people away. So we, these businesses should get their free spots back, so. I hope you can look into that.
Thank you.
Next thing is, I, might be a little early, but is the street sweeper scheduled out yet?
I don't believe so. Mrs. Reed, has that been published yet? No, as far as we know, it hasn't.
Because I did see one in Southside today, but it might have been a PennDOT sweeper.
Yeah, when that is published, it'll be, I know it'll be placed on the city's website.
Ah, yeah, I know it is a little early, but I, I think winter's over, I think we can start sweeping. I saw geese flying north three weeks ago.
I think April is when they.
And that's early. The geese know more than meteorologists do.
I think the month of April is when they start.
Okay, lastly, I heard what you told me last week, the dangerous dog legislation would be in third order. What's the next step with that, if there is one?
Yeah, the next step now is we're, you know, still in the process of reviewing the memo, The memo that Solicitor Hayes had submitted to council, which you had requested that we look into. We're going to get together with the administration and the mayor to get their view on it, And then we'll move forward from there.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Next speaker is Joan Hodowanitz.
Joan Hodowanitz, city resident and still recovering property taxpayer. First, I want to make some comments about the first two months of the Cognetti administration And how impressed I am with the change in leadership. I've, I'm 70 years old, and except for a 26-year absence, I've always lived in Scranton. And I'm well aware of its long legacy politically. And it's always had a culture of, well, let's call it corruption and entitlement in many regards, Although the vast majority of city employees are great people. But that was a leadership thing, the political chiefs of the city. And it's nice to see the mayor and also our new city controller Bringing in a new ethic into the city, which has been long needed. So now we're seeing, you know, an emphasis on service and accountability. Especially Chief, or City Controller Murray, Had a opportunity to talk to him about a few things, And he's clearly well aware of the need for good, strong internal controls Within the administration, especially financially. This is great. The city is like the Titanic. It's not going to stop on a dime. It's going to take time. But we have, we have turned in the right direction, and this is great. And when I talk about this culture of corruption and entitlement, I'll give you one example. When I was on the Ethics Board last year, I asked a city employee about how I might get access to the union contracts. And here's what I was told, quote, "I don't work for you," unquote. And, you know, I mean, you can't get there from here with that kind of attitude. Yes, that employee does work for me because I'm a taxpayer, or I was back then. But I also want to thank Pat Rogan for his long service. And believe me, I respect somebody who would be a councilman for 10 years And take, take a lot of the criticism that he did. And with regard to the coronavirus, I too see that there is a little edge of hysteria about what might happen. But on the other hand, having come out of the military, I will tell you that the Pentagon has a plan for everything. That includes the zombie apocalypse and alien invasions. So I come from a culture which, whether even if there's a low probability of an event occurring, We did plan for it. And I've heard a lot of information about the city planning for what they would do And the county and Wilkes-Barre, and that's great. But one element of our community that I think is not often considered And is virtually invisible is our homeless population. And those are the ones I would worry about. I don't know how many we have, I'm sure we have quite a few. Let me ask you something, where does a homeless person go to wash their hands? When's the last time a business in downtown Scranton let them in to use the restroom? You know, I mean, there, if anything like a coronavirus did hit us, They would be among the first victims. And I would like for, when we dust off our plans, that someone addresses that entire issue. How many do we have? Where are they? And how would we serve their medical needs? Because if they get infected, they're going to spread it too. So maybe we can learn, have some lessons learned For how the city handled the 1918 flu epidemic. And I'm sure the Lackawanna Historical Society And even the newspaper in their old records could give us some lessons learned. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next speaker is David Dobson.
If you could pronounce that in Polish, you win $50. You lose. Okay. All right. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton, taxpayer. Last week, we had a lot of discussions on the gas card business, And what I think is the right thing to do is establish a set of rules, And time to move on, let's not get obsessed with. It is a considerable amount of money, but, you know, there and again, A lot of voters, I noticed, don't ever want to pay the price for who they vote for. And that's all there is to it. I used to call the independents back in the early old Bush deniers, you know? I voted for them, but I don't want you to know it because things are starting to go a little wrong. But I really think that we should resolve it and just move on. Animal control was mentioned also, and I did mention that Griffin Pond needs your support, and I would also support that even if it hurts us a little bit. Pit bulls, they're loaded with pit bulls up there. I just adopted an old dog. Anybody over 60 years old can adopt a dog for 40 bucks instead of 150. And I adopted an older dog because, who knows, maybe I won't be around For the little girl or guy, so that's the way I went. But banning certain breeds and stuff, I mean, I made friends with the pit bull, And he was in the yard, and he nipped my finger just being excited one day, And I stayed away from him, and then I felt sorry for him, I started giving him biscuits. Well, this little talented guy climbed through a chain link fence And got out, and I thought, oh, boy, you know? All he wanted was for me to take him for a walk. Now, the owner is a putz, but sometimes maybe that's right. There aren't any bad dogs, they're just bad owners. And once again, our LST tax, whatever we have to do to fight for it, Keep it going, because Plan B is probably massive property taxes, And that's unacceptable, defend it at all costs, at all costs. We can't keep going on with 54% of the people in this town paying. We can't keep going on with 54% of the people in this town paying property tax. And whatever other entities exist, go buy tax-free, and that's fine and dandy. But Grandma and Grandpa can't. I'm not a grandfather. I was never a father. But I certainly fit in the category where I'm comfortable, but not, you know, wealthy. And, you know, it gets to the point where it starts eating into everything you could do during the summer or whatever and attend a NASCAR race or go on a train excursion ride or something. And, well, last week, we had somebody in here criticizing about support for Planned Parenthood. Planned Parenthood is pro-life. They were drummed out of Scranton. Do you want every low-income person having unintended pregnancies? Their kids have to be schooled. They don't earn much money. They don't pay many taxes. It's just ungladly. You know, during my generation, we had the population time bomb. And there are certain countries in this world, like Egypt, India, China, their populations have doubled and tripled. So it's something to think about. And the real trouble starts when everybody wants to live like they live in the West. So then you've got 10 times the pollution and global warming and everything else that comes with it. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Have a nice night. Next speaker is Connor O'Brien.
Good evening, council. Thank you. Connor O'Brien, resident of Scranton. I'm the co-founder and executive director of the Scranton Fringe Festival. Members of council, I believe, would have received an email from Mrs. Reed earlier today, correct? I'm sure you've had a busy day, though. For those on council who are unaware and possibly any of our guests here in the audience, the Scranton Fringe Festival is a nonprofit-based organization in the city of Scranton. We are coming up on our sixth annual year of presenting the festival in the fall. It is centered on the performing arts, the visual arts, the literary arts, excuse me, and uniting the community. Last year during the festival, I believe we had approximately 7,500 to 8,000 in attendance across the 10-day festival. One of the documents, excuse me, council would have received is the confirmation of a survey conducted by the Business Leaders Students of the University of Scranton under their staff director. It has confirmed that in the last three or so years, each year just during the festival itself, it generates over a quarter of a million dollars in the regional economy through hotel, restaurant, and that does not count the artist payouts that we provide or the direct ticket sales. For full transparency, it is worth noting that that economic impact spans all of Lackawanna County and possibly even parts of Luzern. But of course, as it is the base of the festival in downtown Scranton and the seat of the county, I would estimate that a large, large percentage of that is based here. The fringe festival is modeled after the Edinburgh Fringe in Scotland, which began in 1947 and is now the world's largest arts festival. A common misconception often created in the arts and culture environment or even in any nonprofit-based platform is that it can be a drain. It's constantly feeding for sponsorship for grants. And of course, we welcome those at any time. But ultimately, we are very proud to prove that the arts and culture are a stimulus and are quite possibly the greatest economic stimulant we have. I believe a recent study confirmed that in the last two years, arts and culture surpassed agriculture for the first time in the national level of economic impact. I have no direct request. Everything's fine, which is nice to say for once, for the most part. We receive no city-based funding. We do receive a small grant from the state and the county level, which we put to good use. Our applications are currently open. They are available at scrantonfringe.org/apply. There is no cost to apply. We receive hundreds of applications every year from across the country and even a few international groups. We've positioned our festival time-wise to match up with major events and other festivals in New York City, Philadelphia, Rochester, New York, Baltimore, to kind of incite artists and performers and creative entrepreneurs to kind of tour the East Coast circuit. And Scranton is perfectly placed there. We are growing to our largest festival ever, 11 days, September 24th through October 4th. So while though we are taking the coronavirus situation incredibly seriously, and we've actually been attending meetings and web conferences with other festival and event planners around the world, we are confident and thankful that at least our major event is so far into the distant future in the fall that it's likely not going to become a major threat, hopefully. With council permission, I am simply going to leave with you our programs from last year. My objective tonight was to begin a dialogue with city council. I greatly appreciate your time. It was also to ensure that going forward, we can position this as a time to put our city on display and shine it brightly because it's been doing so for over five years, and we're incredibly, incredibly proud. With 1 minute and 28 seconds remaining, I would just like to thank council member Bill Gohend for the remarks about some of the comments that were made by an individual last week. And I'm sure I speak on behalf of many, many people in this room and those who could not attend, that that's not the Scranton that we know or want to be a part of. Unfortunately, it may be the Scranton that many know and have known in the past. But I am deeply, deeply grateful that it is no longer the Scranton that we are creating going forward. So with council's permission, I will leave this here, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. There are no other speakers on the sign-in sheet. Would anyone else like to come forward and address council?
Good evening, council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I just have one other question, Bill. I know that the MDC, I always get their initials mixed up. We're going to come in again for another caucus. And I don't know whether I should send this question to you or if you could just take it as a question. And the parking meters, of course, still continue to be a pain. And unless you leave the house prepared with your quarters, it's going to be a problem. So I was just thinking, the last time I used them, I wondered, why couldn't they have a dollar slot to put the dollar in so that we wouldn't have to put the four quarters in to make the dollar? And it seems like it should be something they should be able to do is to make it available that we could put the dollar in there to make it for those minutes that we need. And rather than scrounging through our purses or remembering to take those quarters before you leave your home. So if you could just take that for something to talk with them about?
Yeah, I just, I highly, maybe I'm wrong, but I highly doubt they would ever do that. And I only say that because they just invested so much money in that equipment. And I can't, unless there's an add-on that they, I mean, I know that you could, you know, pay with a creditor debit card. But unless there was an easy way to do that, I can't imagine that they would make another investment. But I will definitely bring it up to them.
I don't feel comfortable using my debit card in a open facility like that with the ability for someone to put those scammers on there. There's no one watching. It's bad enough at the gas stations that you have to be mindful of that. And never mind a meter on the street. So that's what I thought when I was putting, you know, putting my quarters in. And I thought, why can't they just have a dollar slot and put that in as well? So if you could just check that out for me.
Yeah, sure. I will bring it up to them.
And I do thank the presentation tonight and the update on the virus situation and all. But I did have two questions on it. I didn't hear them say, so maybe I missed it. But I was thinking about, they said they were going to talk to the schools and everything. But what about the people my age, the 60 and over, the senior citizen groups? And I didn't hear any kind of dialogue that they're going to be having with the senior groups. So if someone could follow up on that as well. And, you know, we don't want to all stay home forever. But we do like being out and about in the public. And if you could just check that out for me.
Sure. Councilman McCandrew is chairperson of Public Safety, so he'll certainly look into that.
Okay, and the other question I had was, I didn't hear, was, you know, they gave these plan that they have for the coronavirus and to be ready and the different people they're meeting with. But I didn't hear them say, how many kits or testing kits are available for us? If they should need that? And how quickly would they be available? And I'm sure that's still in the planning stages as to where would they go? Do they go to the hospital or what do they do? But I didn't hear any kind of numbers about the kits.
Yeah, we can find out. I think that would be, certainly, we can pose that question to Chief Lucas. I think that would be a question for the hospitals and probably would be something that comes down from the CDC and the federal government. But Councilman McCandrew will look into that.
I think it would eliminate a lot of the fears and concerns because I, like you, when I'm out there in the public, it's just like, how can you go out there now? And, you know, you wash your hands. We've always washed our hands, but I think we're all more conscious of washing our hands now to that happy birthday riddle that we learned when we were kids. But it becomes more prominent now when we go out. We're more conscious of washing them. We come in the house, I know I wash my hands as soon as I come in the house.
Red raw. My hands are red raw from washing.
Right. Your hands get so tender. So that's my concerns tonight, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address council?
Good evening. Thank you very much, members of council. I came here really not to speak, but I felt moved to stand in support of my friend, Dr. Rothschild. I had hoped that my first time before the new council and this administration would have been an introduction of myself and what I plan to do from my seat. I'm Kyle Mullin, state representative from the 112th District. And there will be an appropriate meeting to do just that, to describe the type of things I want to do on behalf of the city, working with council and with this administration. But I simply came here to tell Dr. Rothschild that we've got her back, that she stands for what's great about the city and what's possible about the city. That regardless of how long you or your family have lived here or how new you are to the city, that we accept you here and we love having you here, regardless of who you love or the principles you stand for. And I can't, I just have to say how proud I am to be her state representative. And that we need people speaking from this podium and across this country, speaking from a place of love and community and compassion, not from a place of hate where very few find infamous comfort. So thank you very much for your service, to all of you for your service. You are at the front lines of our democracy. And I tip my hat to your service, to your public service every single day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Holmes.
Good evening, council. My name is Sergeant Erica Smith. I am a senior combat medic for the PA Army National Guard. I'm also volunteer firefighter EMT for the local community. And I'm also a master's student at Marywood University for clinical mental health counseling. I'm also transgender. I'm a transgender woman. And while Scranton has become a place that's more and more accepting, one of the things I've noticed is that we don't really do a great job of communicating what resources we have available and where we can go and not go. Like, for example, some people, they don't accept people like me. And it took me about six hours to cash a check the other day to go to two different banks because I mostly just got laughed at because I didn't look like my driver's license.
I'm sorry. Can you talk closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Yep. Additionally, medical resources. Most of us have to go down to Allentown or Philadelphia as well as knowing like what resources local areas have. We just don't know what's out here. We don't know what specialties we have here. We don't know what providers are trained properly or who's willing to accept and who's willing not to. And then even like religious, spiritual matters. What churches are willing to accept? What aren't? I'm Christian. What church do I go to that I need to be fearful of being told a fire and brimstone? And what others are accepting? And then businesses, like what businesses are okay with me, what are not? Because everyone is allowed their own opinion. Whether it's discrimination or not, discrimination's institutionalized. It's not overt what we think of from the TV and movies. It's the silent, well, I'm not going to acknowledge them. I'm not going to treat them properly. So what I would like to ask is, could we look into developing a repository of resources? Resources that are like, that tell us, okay, these are the medical resources that we have available to people who are LGBTQ with their specific needs. These are the people with the specializations that are properly trained and vetted to work with these populations so that they're not going to get hurt. A repository of local religious institutions that are willing to take on people. And, you know, a repository of businesses, of businesses that are willing to opt in and say, hey, you know, we're okay. Whoever you want, like, we'll take anybody. And that knows like whether you're from here or you're visiting and you're from this community. You know, you can just look up online on the Scranton website and say, okay, I know exactly where I need to go, who I can talk to, where it's safe and where it's not. Because while we want to work towards a future that is fully accepting and loving and caring, we still need to deal with the reality of now. And the reality now is it's not safe. And so I would just like to ask the city council to look into developing maybe something like that that I don't think would be too much of a resource hog, so thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Anyone else?
Marie Schumacher.
Good evening.
Tonight, I would, I've got a list of questions, and I did not write them down. But at the end, if I don't get them answered tonight, I will try to submit them before next week so you can hopefully. I'd like to start by saying I second the proposal that Lee Morgan presented last week. I'm sorry he's not here. A Home Rule Charter review is very, very definitely overdue. And you guys can make it easy and vote it, or you can leave it to us. And we can go out and get petitions and do it that way. But I don't know what you'd be afraid of having a review for, so I hope you do get to voting on that. Next, I guess, Mr. Donahue. Last week, you promised, Lenny, you would have an answer for him this week. Did you, I know he's not here tonight, but have you transmitted that to him?
So we sent out a very detailed email last week looking exactly what we're looking for from DPW, answers we're looking for from DPW and also the city engineer. So we're just waiting for a response on that. And as soon as I get a response on that, I'm going to reach out to Lenny and then the other neighbors over there I've also been in contact with.
You have been in contact with them?
I was over there about two and a half weeks.
Oh, no, I mean, since you did that letter.
As soon as I get my, as soon as I get a response, I will be in contact with them, yes.
Okay. Now, can you tell me what percentage of the cable fees that are provided to the city are transferred to ECTV?
No, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. What is the next milestone in the, I believe it's the HRG contract on the stormwater situation in general? Have we had an MS4 permit submitted yet?
As I stated, I think, two or three weeks ago, council had requested a caucus with that firm and the city planner and the administration. We have not received a word yet. But Mr. King did say that when he was prepared to come before council with that company to unveil the update or progress or plan, that they would do that. So I'm looking forward to that.
Okay, well, maybe we could get a little advance notice, so if we have something else.
Right. Well, when there's a caucus, I usually give a week's notice.
Okay, and then I'm somewhat confused because of the letter that you all sent to DPW on the Novembreno Pool. Because when I ask about why the demolition contract didn't come here, you said the city council wasn't involved, so could you?
I don't understand your question.
Well, I mean, you're trying to get something from DPW through the recreation department.
So we asked for an update on the Novembreno project, and that's what we received. That's why I put it in third order.
Okay. Another thing, a lot of things, actually. But I was going through the, last week, you said, you know, where are we going to get money from? And that it doesn't grow on trees and show us where you can cut. But there were a number of things in the exit plan that stated where money could be obtained and where possibly cuts in expenses could be made. So there were a few. Number one was retirees of the medical costs. And I guess Kyle picked that up. and I guess Kyle picked that up from Mary, and I hope Mary will be coming back and joining the four of you and making female bookends, but time will tell. But workers' comp ratio to payroll, has that improved since the exit plan was?
There have been improvements in the workers' compensation program. Numbers-wise, I don't have that in front of me, but if you do submit that in writing, we can certainly relay it to the administration and try to get an answer for you.
I will do that. Also, job descriptions of light-duty positions, did that ever happen? And how many times has a worker been placed in a light-duty job?
That'd be a question for the HR department. So, again, if you want to put that in writing, I can try to get that for you.
So, you want me to do a write-to-know on that one?
Well, I mean, I think you should. Probably the best bet would be, because you're giving us the question, and I'm like the middleman, so I'm just going to go to the HR department. So, with the new administration, what I honestly might suggest is that you just go right to the department and see if they'll answer the question for you.
No, they don't answer questions directly to people.
Well, then, you'd have to...
I mean, that was the policy, I thought.
Well, I don't know if it's a new policy of this administration, so.
Okay. Has the required retirement age...
Ms. Schumacher, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address council?
If I could.
Sure.
My name is Stephen Casey, 50-year resident of the Hill section. I think I would be remiss tonight if I did not step up to speak in regards to a situation which I think, Mr. Chair, you represented very well, the stand of the city. However, I think maybe we should hear from some of our citizens. I spent a long time as a history student, so I'm looking over things, and I recalled the story this morning, which I think is very interesting. In the South, it's actually Mississippi, they were all Democrats, everybody was at that point. A gentleman went through northern Alabama declaring that his opponent was a flagrant heterosexual, and everyone knew it. Well, at the point he said that, I didn't know what a heterosexual was, and I think most of the people there didn't either. And you didn't grab your cellphone then and call it up and see what it was. He won his seat. Afterwards, they went out and they asked people what was going on. "Oh, well, don't you know he is?" I would like us to think carefully about someone who came to this city to be a citizen here, to be a student, and a good one at that, to decide to stay here, to run for an office that she was eligible to sit for, and took the job when she got it. Thank you very much, Jess. We have learned something, the 50 years and more, and this was and should be a future, a welcoming city for people who want to come here, whether they want education, whether they want to settle down, whether they have a spouse or whatever. They should be able to come here, and it should not be the topic of discussion in a council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Anyone else like to address council? No? Last call? Okay, Mrs. Reed.
Fifth order, five motions.
Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments?
I have a few. So, yesterday, I actually reached, I'm sorry. I want to first of all thank Mayor Cognetti and Acting Chief Lucas, because actually, yesterday, I reached out and said, "Could you please provide me with some information, so I can provide an update as chairman of public safety to all of you this evening?" And it was, the response was immediate, and it was great to hear that the mayor said, "You know what? I'll come and do it with the acting chief," because it's a rarity that they respond and come and present to us, so I want to thank them for that. But in addition to that, they did a great presentation. But with regard to Ms. Hodowanis's question, I'm sorry, her question, and for seniors' information, can we, you know, forward that and say, "What's in plan? Maybe it isn't planned, that we don't know about." And Ms. Hodowanis's question or concern about the homeless, I know that, you know, there's a couple of events canceled this week, the Friends of the Poor being one of them, next week, and a majority of them are homeless. So, it's an issue, maybe it is addressed. I'm not aware, but just relay that to the chief, and if not, they can address that for us. Testing kits, I don't know about testing kits, but I've seen, just through social media and reading and the paper, that most insurances, insurance companies in this area, say Highmark, Geisinger, are covering these types of testing if they arise and if they're referred to by your doctors. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but there is a plan in place for testing. Also, two weeks ago, I brought concerns of a taxpayer about Griffin Pond, and their concerns were that, you know, we give them $63,000 a year, they don't take cats anymore, or feral cats, they don't, they're selective with dogs, and, you know, that all the feral cats go to Ni'og, which is, you know, raised by, the money to operate that is raised by grants and donations. So, I reached out to Chief Graziano. He shares the same concerns as me, you know, and the citizen who brought these issues to us, and he says we need a long-term solution, because the situation's only going to get worse. So, you know, moving forward, I think what we need to do is get ahead of this, because, like you said, the situation's going to get worse. We do provide money to Griffin Pond. Maybe we explore doing it ourselves, but my understanding, and this is what Chief Graziano said, that, you know, this deal with Griffin Pond was negotiated from the past business administrator. So, for the most part, it is what it is for this year. They got their money. I don't see them changing or adapting to our needs, but I'd like to get ahead of this, and maybe we should have some conversation moving forward before next year, before, you know, the situation gets worse. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman McAndrew. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
Yes, I have several comments. First, I would just like to point out, I am having a little bit of an issue with my emails. So, if there are residents who are trying to get me through my council email, if I haven't gotten back to you, I will. For some reason, I don't get the emails unless I'm here in the building, so that's a problem that I'm going to be working on, but I will certainly get back to you if I've received your email. And something else regarding communication that I would like to bring up, I just set up a Facebook page, separate from the campaign Facebook page that I was using, but one as a council member that I would like to use to, you know, communicate with the public, let you know legislative updates, or just to provide you with city information, and also using it as a way for people to contact me. So, you can take a look on Facebook, on there, it's under Council Member Jessica Rothschild, and, like I said, that's just in an effort to increase communication and airwaves. And also, on that note, I have brought this up before to council, and I had come up with a more formal proposal that I provided to my other council members regarding a town hall. I would like to have ideally biannual town halls throughout the city to invite residents to come to that. Now, we have a large crowd here tonight, but we don't typically, and I want to give people another avenue for being able to connect with us and with other city-elected officials to discuss their issues and have them addressed in a bit of a different forum. So, that was my idea behind the town hall. We would like to have the mayor there, and I know that we are going to work on some dates, and I'll be able to provide more updates on that. I'd also like to thank Connor, Connor O'Brien, for coming to talk about the Fringe Festival. I've really enjoyed being a part of the Fringe Festival in the past and being an attendee. I think it's fantastic for the city of Scranton. We should encourage more things like that that help to celebrate the arts in Scranton. And I just wanted to respond to one of the individuals who spoke tonight, Erica. She had asked about resources for specifically the transgender community, and I think that's something that we could possibly talk to the Human Relations Commission about, that it might be in their wheelhouse. So, that's something that I can certainly look into for you, because I think that would be a great opportunity to provide some more education to the public on what resources we have in the city or in the region that would be available to people. And then, I would also really like to thank all the people who have come out tonight. I wish you were here every week. And I'd like to say a special thanks to Mayor Cognetti and to Representative Kyle Mullins for both being here tonight. Their words were very appreciated, as well as the others who spoke in support of me. And with that, I would like to address what happened last week. I was hopeful that I would not need to address it, but it appears that some comments were made last week that, in my opinion, were disrespectful, demeaning, and disappointing. In my absence from the meeting, I didn't have the opportunity to respond, and no one else had addressed it at that point, so I would like to take the time to do that now. First, to avoid any confusion in the future, when I'm being formally addressed, it is appropriate to call me council member, councilwoman, or Dr. Rothschild, as my nameplate below here, I believe, indicates. If anyone would like to know more about my professional degree, which is Doctor of Physical Therapy, or the scope of practice for physical therapists, I'd be more than happy to discuss that with you personally. It is a field that I love and a degree that I worked very long and hard to earn, seven years to be exact, and if you don't believe me, I have the student loans to prove it. And I firmly believe that if one of my male colleagues had a doctoral degree, that they would be respectfully addressed as doctor without any question. Second, I'd like to establish for the record that I am in fact a woman, and I ask that you use the pronouns of she, her, and hers when referring to me. Keep in mind that it really isn't that difficult to be kind and considerate to one another. I hope you all understand that when an individual is purposefully misgendered, it can be very hurtful and offensive, and I can only imagine what it's like for someone to be transgender or non-binary and to experience this on a very frequent basis. I am a human being, just like everyone else, and I am deserving of your respect and dignity. In the future, I wholly expect this council and those who choose to speak during fourth order of citizens' participation to uphold the values of common decency and, of course, decorum. As noted many times before, this use of citizens' participation to attack others is simply unacceptable, and I believe clearly violates our rules of council. I'm asking that the president of council and/or our solicitor firmlyly step in if this type of behavior were to occur in the future, which I'm really hopeful that it does not. And it's frustrating to me that I must take the time from our council meeting to address these comments. However, I refuse to be mocked and bullied. I want to emphasize that while I'm fully aware, as an elected official, I am open to public criticism on matters related to city business or city council. I do not expect that criticism to extend into my private life. This must stop, and it must stop now. With my statement tonight, I am confident that this issue is resolved once and for all. I'm here as a public servant. I've enjoyed my past two months serving on council here, and I've especially enjoyed working on issues that matter to the people of Scranton, who elected me for a reason. I'm looking forward to the remainder of my four years here, and I know what we can accomplish together if given a fair chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes, and just to clear everything up, the pronouns I identify with are he, his, and him. I stand in solidarity with my colleague here. The remarks last week weren't acceptable at all, and I apologize to my colleague for not saying anything. I actually had to go back to hear actually what he said. Just to put it into context, for the first three and a half minutes, the gentleman was up there. He was defending a fire chief who misused city resources. So, I admittedly just sort of zoned out, and I just didn't catch it. It's not an excuse. There is no excuse, but just to put that into context, and I would like to give my sincere apologies to my fellow colleague. Moving on from that, Ms. Schumacher brought up healthcare. I did have a meeting scheduled with Attorney Escher this morning. That was, due to unforeseen circumstances, that was postponed, and I'm going to be meeting with her either towards the end of this week or the beginning of next week. Also, we did get one complaint about a burned-out vacant house. Mrs. Reed, if we'd be able to send that along to licensing and inspections. The address is on Preston Place in West Scranton, and I'll be able to pass that along to you.
I'm sorry, I believe that's the same, the same one that we've asked to be addressed in the past.
Did we? Okay. Will we be able to send a follow-up then? Because I know, I believe we got one at the end of last week, an email at the end of last week, too. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue. First thing I want to address is obviously the comments from last week. I'm not telling anybody here, or anyone who may be watching or in the city, anything they don't know, but I think I can say with great certainty that Bob Bolis, in my opinion, after sitting up here six years, is an ignorant fool. And I say that not as a name-calling, because we're not allowed to do that, but I do think, based on his statements, that is, that is actually, you could probably prove that as a fact. He is a weak-minded bully, and Dr. Rothschild, as evident from all of you who are here tonight to support her, and the thousands of people who supported her when she ran for council and was a top vote getter, is a personal friend of mine outside of politics, and a wonderful person who is obviously committed to public service and who is committed to this city. Mr. Bolis's comments last week were disgusting and disgraceful. They defy any sort of logic that you would, you could ever think of, and the uneducated venom that he spews is not going to be tolerated at these meetings, period. We are here as city council members to conduct the business of the city. There is a lot of things going on, and as Dr. Rothschild said, to have to spend time addressing this each and every week is not productive for anyone. We have an administration, a mayor who comes to the council meetings and addresses council and has a working relationship with council. I believe we're moving in the right direction, and to have someone who literally does not represent this city at all come here and hijack our meetings, it will not be allowed anymore. So, thank you. And again, Dr. Rothschild comes to council with an unbelievable background, and to question that, I think, is absolutely ridiculous. So, I look forward to actually working with Dr. Rothschild on issues that matter and not having to address this, and like I said, it will not be tolerated at any point moving in the future. And that's all I have. Mrs. Reed?
Wait, I have something real quick. I'm sorry, I should have said this also. Also in solidarity, I would like to be referred to as he, him, or his.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Reed?
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, no business at this time.
Thank you. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.